Call the Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Barker.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered together this warm evening to perform city business. We ask for your oversight as we and our staff continue to keep our community a great place to live, work, raise a family, and have a successful business. We also enjoy this community and we will work together to keep this community as we enjoy it. We want to say thanks for your protective hand for all our firefighters, apologize for that, that worked to contain the Woodbury Fire. We also want to thank everyone that has been and continued to be involved with this fire. We are also thankful that no loss of possessions or life and ask for your continued oversight to everyone that is currently involved with this fire. Keep them all safe and ask for continued assistance by bringing additional favorable weather conditions to bring this fire under final control. We extend your hand of protection to our local firefighters and our police officers as they continue to protect our possessions and our community. We also ask for this to be extended to our military members and their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. Bring them all home safe at the end of every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
Before we do roll call, I think we're going to have several people on the phone, including City Manager Bryant Powell.
Correct.
And then we'll see with roll call who's on the phone. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that fiscal year 2019-2020 Health and Human Services funding contracts between the City of Apache Junction and the Apache Junction Food Bank in the amount of $24,500, the Boys and Girls Club of the East Valley Superstition Branch in the amount of $24,500, Community Alliance Against Family Abuse in the amount of $16,000, and Horizon Health and Wellness in the amount of $15,000 be approved, and that the receipt of the annual report of the Apache Junction Public Library Board of Trustees for 2019-2020 fiscal year be acknowledged.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
I just got to make a statement before I vote. I agree with everything. I would like to say about the Health and Human Services contracts that all of the entities that we are giving money to are worthy causes, but I truly do believe that the people of Apache Junction are giving and can support them, and I am going to vote no on this because of the issuance of those contracts.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Six to one, Your Honor, in favor? Motion passes.
We have no words or presentations. Any announcements will go to the left side. Robin?
No, sir.
Announcements?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the community for all the thank you cards. At our, we had several businesses and community members that were making and collecting thank you cards for first responders, some for the Woodbury Fire, some for our local first responders, and we collected almost 420 cards, I think it was like 419 cards from the community, and several of the different fire departments and fire districts had sent out social media messages to the community thanking them for that. And so I wanted to thank, in particular, our local post office dropped off a bunch of cards. The Boys and Girls Club, the kids at the Boys and Girls Club made a bunch of them. Apache Junction, the Apache Junction Band came and made a bunch of cards, and hopefully I'm not missing anybody, but a lot of community members had come, and so thank you for that. They were greatly appreciated.
Chip?
No, I just want to say to everyone that be careful with, I'm going to say, your fireworks at home this next few days, and definitely come out and enjoy the display that we're going to be having, and it's an opportunity to, you know, celebrate our nation, and it's will be very well controlled and we won't have to worry about a backyard fire that could possibly start with the local little things.
So yes, the fourth will be over before this gets into paper, so anybody's seeing that beforehand. It's been pretty quiet out there on the streets. I've not been hearing the launches like we usually do, but our police have been instructed to go after and try to track them down. It's not anything to mess with. Just a few days ago, five acres burned up right across from the mining camp, and there's like 50 houses over there on that side. Those houses could have all just burned up really quick, so it's fun, but it's not worth burning up somebody's house. Do come out. Starts at what time, Matt? Five or six?
It should be right here.
Six thirty.
Six thirty to eight thirty.
Six thirty at the fairgrounds. We're going on like always, and thank you to Republic Services for providing the fireworks. Once again, they do a great job on that, and...
Watermelon from the Little League.
Little League provides watermelon?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Anything else? Let's get everybody out there. I know a lot of people are away on vacation, but let's make this ours. And Superior is not having one, so we might have a lot of visitors from the east, and we definitely pull from East Mesa out here, so. Assistant City Managers report.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Our City Manager Bryant Powell's on the phone, and he asked me to report tonight. Your Honor, there's no report tonight.
Boy, you left an easy assignment, didn't you?
That concludes my report.
Great job, Matt. Great job.
Okay, public hearing. Presentation, discussion, and public hearing resolution number nineteen dash zero eight, adopting infrastructure improvement plan. Larry?
Mr. Mayor, you may want to actually read eight and nine also, because it is one public hearing. You'll just do one public hearing. There's no vote on these tonight, but for purpose of the public hearing, that way you don't have to have three separate public hearings.
Okay, item number eight, presentation, discussion, and public hearing on resolution nineteen oh nine declaring a public record of a certain document, A.J. City Code. Item number nine, presentation, discussion, and public hearing on Apache Junction City Code Land Development Code. Larry, kick all three of those off.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and those on the phone. Wish you were here. I have three items. As per usual, the middle one, if you will, is the one where we adopt the other by reference, so there's really just a development fee report and the update to the ordinance that implements the fees. So I got a very short presentation tonight. And by way of background, we've been here a couple of times before with Carson Bice. He's actually in Maricopa doing the same thing tonight, so he has multiple clients, so I thought I could handle it tonight. But by state statute, every five years we're required to update our land use assumptions, our development fee report, the infrastructure improvement plan. So those are the two products that report, and then we implement the development fees in the City Code in Volume Two, Chapter Seven. So where we've been before, we had a kickoff meeting. We did do an RFP. We reported the bids. The council approved the contract back in November. We had a work session in December. We had two meetings with housing developers during those times, back in December and April. We had a public hearing on just the land use assumptions document, and then we had another public hearing on, again, these draft documents. So they're pretty much in final form at this point, and the, we've had four drafts, so this is the fourth and final draft dated with today. There was a couple amendments requested by the council on April twenty-third, those related to calling out, if you will, the recreational vehicle fee, and there was a typo on that page. I'll show you the table in a minute. The land use assumptions, the development fee report, we're basically scheduled to have this a month from now on August sixth. So August sixth will be another public hearing on both items and adoption. This is the latest version here. We've had this on the front counter. We've had it posted on the city website. This is the table that everybody goes to. It's pretty much unchanged since last time. We did have some discussion last time at the public hearing. There was a gentleman that spoke regarding the fee for multiple dwelling. So again, costs have gone up over five years. These are based on our level of service, what we provide to the community in terms of police, parks, roads, and libraries. So we have the four fees. We have them for both residential and non-residential. And the second product is the ordinance. I went through it early on. City Attorney Joel Stern went through it. That is on, in the packet as well. You see the yellow highlighted version of the ordinance. We did come up with some new definitional changes, and I thought some improvements to the ordinance. The only other thing changed is once the report was done, Carson Bice then plugged the tables that are in this document. They go into the ordinance. So again, we have a draft. That ordinance dated July second, and then the final ordinance, which you have the two items. One is the resolution, one is the ordinance adopting those changes to the land development code. And again, there will be a public hearing on August sixth. We'll hopefully adopt those two items. Again, it's at your discretion, but the way we've set this up, you can't implement the fees for seventy-five days after you adopt them. So if we do adopt them August sixth, they don't go into effect. I think that gives all the building public, if you will, notice at least seventy-five days that the fees will be what the new fees are, which in this case, some of them are going down and some of them are going up. And I think that's it.
So as we're discussing now, we can discuss all three of these items.
Yes.
So, Robin?
Yeah, on the ordinance in seven dash one sixteen H?
So I think I need to...
You've crossed out that the city agrees to waive, if the city agrees to waive development fees assessed, the city shall reimburse the appropriate development fee account for the amount of the waived fee. Does that mean that we are no longer having to pay that fee ourselves if we waive it?
No, that was a change in the statute. Maybe Joel wants to address that. I think in 2012, essentially, if you do a development agreement and you waive the fee, you have to put it in the operating budget.
Right.
So you essentially reimburse the development fee account with general operating revenue dollars. But that's not, I don't believe, a change. Maybe Joel wants to...
It's out of here, so where is it that it's in here?
What section is that again, please?
It's seven one sixteen H. The H that is blanked out, that is red marked out, red line. There we go. Is it referenced elsewhere or am I not?
You know, I think the intent of that was to essentially tell council, you probably shouldn't be waiving fees. So if you do waive the fee, you're going to, by operation of law, under nine dash four sixty-three point oh five, I forget the subsection. You will have, you'll still have to reimburse, but I think this takes the ability of the council to waive it. If you want that back in there, we can certainly do that, because there may...
It does not, it does not take away our having to reimburse.
Correct.
Is what, okay, because when I read it, I thought, does this mean we don't have to reimburse it anymore, or?
I think, and in the past, there's been waivers, and I remember...
And we paid the general, paid for them out of the general fund.
Right, and the statute changed, I forget what year, but in the early 2000s, there was a lot of waivers from different cities, and so that's what made the legislate, remember, the legislature doesn't like cities and towns, and the home builders lobbied the legislature to make sure that if a council waives any fees, it comes out of the general fund.
Okay, so we still have to pay for it?
Absolutely.
Because this is redlined does not mean we do not have to pay for it.
That is correct.
Thank you. That was, that was the essence of my question.
Okay.
So again, if you, I think we did talk about this. Bryant, you might weigh in on this. I believe we talked, and I'll have to check about why this is in here. I think this was a, I thought we were going to leave it in. It doesn't, so if you want to waive the fees in a development agreement, you can. You just have to reimburse them in...
Right, and this made that unclear to me, and that's...
Yes, so we can, we can unstrike through that and put it back in, just so you know that if you do development agreement and you do waive the fees, they basically have to come out of the operating budget, so...
I just wanted that to be so clear, so that we all understood that.
Yep.
You don't think this could hurt our chances of getting a shoe factory out here?
Well, we might not be able to get the socks to go with it.
Is that the horseshoe factory, or is that? So again, we can put that back in, and then just everyone will know that you do have to reimburse the development fee fund for any waivers that you grant.
But I think that's found in another section, right, Joel? That we do have to reimburse our general fund.
That's in the state statute.
The state statute requires it, but like I said, there was confusion with a former city manager about that, and I do recall that, and I think this language wasn't in there. We put it in, and then I think the decision, and I wasn't in the conversation with Mr. Kirch and Mr. Powell, however, I think the decision was to take it out because we didn't want to have any confusion whatsoever. But under state law, you would have, if you decide to waive it, you will have to take it out of the general fund.
Wouldn't we be more prone to look at our ordinances than state law, and wouldn't we want to see that in our ordinances?
Yes, but state law would preempt on this issue.
Right, and if we didn't see it, then we would say, oh, no, we don't have to do that, but if it's here...
Well, yeah, but not everything that you're allowed to do is in your city code.
That's true.
So I don't know if you want to do that, and then the state's going to say, okay, you're preempted from everything. That's what they probably would do if you start putting everything in...
Okay.
But over the next five years, if you want the council to have discretion as to whether to waive fees, then you would leave it in.
And you still have the discretion even if you...
Even if you take it out.
Correct.
You have the discretion. It doesn't change anything. It simply removes it from the ordinance and leaves it in state law.
Correct.
Correct?
Right.
And I'm sure we'd have executive sessions where you'd be asking me, hey, if you, if you wanted to waive something, I'm sure you would have a call for an executive session on that.
Well, then leave it in or take it out. That's totally up to the rest of the council. I just wanted it clarified for myself.
Yes.
Well, I think if we leave it in, it describes as to what would have to be done if it's in there.
We can...
So you're removing that, I'll say, question any aspect on it if you don't have it in there at all.
So when they see this next, we can have it put, have it back in?
Yep. It won't be yellow. It'll just be regular text.
Just be regular? Okay.
Correct. Well, there'll actually be a clean version, is what Joel calls it, without the yellow and the red.
Then the second H in yellow will now be a D again.
Correct.
Okay, or, ah, sorry.
Aye.
I can read, but I can't do the alphabet. It's really bad.
One question I have is the green on the dates. Was the reason for using the green, and I noticed like, for example, on one of the pages, it's got highlighted March first, nineteen ninety-seven, and it's...
Yeah, those were for my benefit to give to the consultant. There were some dates in there in the back in the appendices is what you're looking at, and those dates were highlighted because they were like, I thought they were outdated references. So there's an example, retirement debt prior to, I highlighted that because I didn't know if that's really relevant anymore, since I don't think we have any debt that hasn't been retired except for a little bit at the library, so I will, I think, I don't think it hurts to leave it in there, but I think there was one more, and I thought it was an out-of-place reference, again, that same reference.
Yeah, there's a couple of...
So we can, we can leave it in, but it was for, it was kind of a question that I had, is it really relevant anymore since we have paid off all the debt? And I don't know if we had debt related to, enough that's an old statute reference, maybe? I don't know.
That probably can go.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to see some of it gone because it was really confusing in the tables.
Yes.
The tables were yellow, and then the red lines through part of it, and it was kind of difficult to differentiate between what was, was redlined and what wasn't.
Yeah, normally what we would have done, so this is what I kind of farmed out to the consultant, where it says parkland costs, that would be, I guess we wouldn't use the yellow there. We would just have, that section there would just be red text, but not the yellow background, so that's...
Two thousand twelve is green.
Any more questions or discussion?
Any other? So we'll see August sixth with the clean version.
Public hearing, we have to...
Oh, we have to have a public hearing, yes.
So if no more discussion, then I will, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on any of these three items? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and there's no action on this, so we'll just move on.
Yes.
Two. Presentation, discussion, and consideration of approval of resolution number nineteen dash twenty-one authorizing the City of Apache Junction to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Pinell County for drug court hearings. Judge Hazel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for hearing me tonight. Briefly, first, let me just state why we're here. I think you've summarized it, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county to hold drug court hearings over at the courthouse. Let me give some background now, first what drug court is. Drug court is a superior court program where people who have been convicted of drug crimes are put in treatment programs and then routinely appear in front of a judge to monitor their treatment and encourage them to stay law-abiding. They appear anytime, as much as four times a month in front of court, or if they improve and are doing well, it gets reduced to a couple of times a month, but the court is held three or four times a month. And the locations are here in Apache Junction and then in Casa Grande as well, and the participants in the program are local to the community, so the people that are in the AJ program are in, live in AJ or here in our community, people in Casa Grande are in the Casa Grande program. So a number of years ago, Mr. Powell approached me about the superior court using our court facility for divorce and conciliation proceedings. I, of course, agreed, and for a number of years, the county used our extra courtroom to do mediation and conciliation proceedings where families would come in, talk about their family dispute issues, and work to work a resolution before a formal court hearing, and it seemed quite successful because people from the local community could participate and not have to go all the way to Florence. So then, move forward. Earlier this year, obviously, we had a change in how the justice courts were run and the districts and the creation of new justice courts. So the court across the street was actually the court for the Pioneer Justice Court as well as the Apache Junction Justice Court, so they had two staffs and two crews and judges in the area that they had for one person plus trying to do superior court. They were doing drug court there as well. So I was approached and asked if we had room by superior court to use our facilities to facilitate their drug court, and they generally do drug court over the lunch hour because judges have to travel up from Florence or wherever they need to be, and I said, sure, we're not doing court during lunchtime generally, and so generally at Tuesdays at noon, they use our courtroom to handle their court proceedings and do their court proceedings, and then the hour before that, they come and they do a staffing where their, the defense attorney, the prosecutor, the drug court counselors, probation, and the judge all meet, talk about how everyone's doing, and encourage them in their progress, and then they have court, and then they get new court dates. So it was decided that it'd be best if we had an intergovernmental agreement... So it was decided that it'd be best if we had an intergovernmental agreement to handle this so that everybody's issues could be protected, and Judge McCarville, the presiding county judge, thought it would be a good idea as well, so that's why we're here today. Mr. Stern worked with his counterpart at the county attorney's office to draft a particular sort of agreement, and I'm here to answer any questions you have, as well as anything else that you may have.
Any questions or discussion? Since we're already doing this with, you say, with divorce?
We did it for a number of years, and then they changed their procedures. It wasn't divorce court, like you would be in court contesting it. It would be if you would come in and attempt to mediate it and work that out, which can be also very contentious. I think as for a liability issue, it was greater because people obviously are a little bit more upset when they're in divorce proceedings than they are to come to a treatment court. But yes, we had done this, I think, for...I know it was a...since Mr. Powell's been city manager, we...he approached me shortly after that, and I don't know how he got involved, but of course, he called me and asked me if we would do it, and I said, of course.
In the future, are there any other areas where this might be used and...
Well, that would be up to the county court and their needs. Obviously, the court systems are always changing, and the laws are changing. Community courts are growing, like mental health court and those types of courts, and they like to have those courts in the local community, so there could be a need in the future. Obviously, the city's use of the courtroom comes as first priority, but we do have two courtrooms, so there is room, and obviously, if there wasn't, we wouldn't offer the service to them, and so it could be different in the future. There's a new type of intercept model that the state Supreme Court's trying to begin where people receive treatment before they ever make it to the court system. I know Councilmember Evans, the different other people have been asked to participate in that project to try to get a pilot for that.
Krista, I see your finger up.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Sure.
Who pays for the treatment? You said that these people are...
Oh, that's the Superior Court of Arizona, Pinal County.
So they pay for the treatment for these people?
Yes.
And then is there an average amount of time that they spend in the treatment program, or does it vary greatly?
Depends on their success. So there's a...and I'm not an expert on drug court, but there are phases, and you graduate from phase to phase. So if you were sitting in my office, and during their court, you hear a lot of clapping going on and, you know, which generally you wouldn't generally see in a court hearing, so it's people moving forward. It's called a graduation, and so there's phases that they work through, and obviously, attending classes, being clean, finding a job, those type of things are all things that people work toward, and the county has a team of people that tries to help them with that.
And then what type of scenario would qualify somebody? Would it be somebody in possession of a certain drug?
Yeah, possession of drugs, you can't...there is an exclusion, and there's an exclusion for people who sell drugs. So possession or the use would be the type of people that would be coming into our court system or coming to use our facility, and the probation and the county attorney agree as to what type of people should be in that program. In Apache Junction right now, it's relatively small. There's between five and 10 participants, and Casa Grande, they have upwards of 55.
Is there a specific name for it?
Pinal County Drug Court.
Okay.
You know, so, and...go ahead.
Any more questions or discussion?
And it's been going on for how long?
The drug court's been going on for years and multiple years. They're always working to improve, and, you know, the whole justice system is transferring away from a model of putting offenders in prison or jails and moving toward a treatment model, and so this is part of that, and to try to get funding for that. And to answer the funding question a little bit more, just like our mental health court that we have at our court, we try to, if they qualify for access or other programs, you know, use those programs to their benefit to encourage the treatment that way, but yes.
And so you said it's just called the Pinal County Drug Court. The reason I asked if there was a name for the program, for example, with the juveniles, they go through the juvenile court, but there's like the hope program.
Right, they have a different...we do not see juveniles there. All the juvenile cases in Pinal County are heard in the complex in Florence. The only exception to that, here at our court, we deal with juvenile offenders that commit City Code violations or traffic offenses or truancy, and so on the last Wednesday of every month at three o'clock, we do those. But any other type of juvenile matter, because of state law, has to go down there, and their hearings are not held here, and I don't have the answer to why they wouldn't move those hearings.
And that's why I asked if there was a specific name.
And the cost...and remember, the whole court is headquartered in Florence, so you have to get a whole group of people that are willing to travel to another place to hold that court.
It looks like it's it.
Thank you.
If no further discussion, I'll call for a motion.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number nineteen dash twenty-one authorizing the City of Apache Junction to enter into an internal intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County for drug court hearings at the municipal court facilities be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor?
We have a motion on upcoming council dates.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Monday, July 15, 2019, and an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Tuesday, July 16, 2019, in the city council conference room and city council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor? Motion passed.
And we have no call to the public, so if no one else has anything else, then we'll adjourn.